I'm calling the meeting order now. Carolyn, will you do a roll call?
Sure. Hoffman.
Here.
Morgan. Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams. Hawk.
Here.
And Mike Anderson.
Here.
Would you have a call?
Very good. Pledge the allegiance. Mike, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any order of business for emergencies?
We do not.
Very good. Do we have anybody attending on Zoom?
We do not.
Okay. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they would like to mention at this time? Very good. We need to approve the minutes for the last city council meeting. Move to approve.
Okay.
I have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The City of Wall, Fire Department, Library, and Cemetery claims. Everybody's had a chance to review those.
With the speed signs, Larry and I, we are those in twenty mile per hour ones that we were able to get on there. And with the freight load leak, all that was happened earlier, what kind of type was in there for the?
AC.
AC, good. Thank you. So move about those. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Carolyn, what do I have to do for review of the budget records?
Just let them know that it's in the packet just for review.
Very good. And item number ten, Holstein excavation has a pay request, number four.
Good. Yeah, I was gonna say at this time, Tim might have something to.
Couple of things, yes, thanks Carolyn. Good to be here tonight, Council. So maybe a quick update on the project itself and then, yes, we do have a pay request for action here tonight as well. The Fourth Avenue Reconstruction Project, of course, is well underway. They have basically, or they have all the utility work done, the grading completed, and as you've probably seen, the larger half, we'll call it, of the main, mainline concrete paving done as well. Actually had planned to stay here tonight and tell you that all the mainline paving was done. They were slated to do that Monday, but with the rain and moisture, that did get pushed back. So they're still slated and planning to do that other side of the mainline paving is coming Monday, so you'll see some action there. Provided things dry out over the weekend, which it looks like they should. Otherwise, yeah, that will be completed and then it'll basically just be concrete work ongoing with all the sidewalk fill-in type work on the edges as well and then obviously working towards completion and seeding of the project and get it wrapped up from there. So I do just note, kind of in my summary, construction completion is actually December, but we're well ahead of schedule and not concerned with the completion date there. So otherwise, I guess, any questions on the Fourth Avenue project? Want to move along too fast. Just real quick on a couple of other projects that I did note, kind of in my quick summary I handed out. Echo Valley Subdivision, we do have the changes speed signs in process. Those should be coming here soon and work with Garrett to get those put up. Industrial Park Development, a couple just final, basically closeout things we're working on there as well. I have been working back and forth with the contractor and just finalizing basically the balance of the bid items and a few little things with that. So certainly fast-paced with the Fourth Ave project going on, but we'll keep working on those as well. And with that, I guess the main action tonight is we do have pay request number four. This does show, just totally referencing off the bid items, but completion percentage of the project at about sixty-six percent or so. So it's certainly moving along and they've got a lot of work done with some more left to go, but it's good to see it come together, so.
Tim, do we need a motion to approve that?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
So.
I'd move to approve the payment number four, amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
We have for visitor tonight, Kitrick Jeffries, a medical marijuana location.
As Chair members of the committee, my name is Kit Jeffries. I represent Public Dispensary out of Rapid City. I'm here today to talk to you about our application that was submitted prior to the deadline for when we were in the City of Wall accepting campus applications. We submitted our application timely and true back to the City Council and the Carolina City Finance. We completed almost all the necessary steps through the license application process, as well as submitted our license fee. We're the first and only applicant to submit. We also talked about being good neighbors in that last meeting. And when the City Council, our current landlord, had their disagreements, we stood patiently and decided to stay out of that fight. They continued to be good neighbors. It wasn't our circus, not our monkeys. We didn't feel like getting involved in any of those disputes. And I'm not going to get into any of those issues today, however, the issue we have in front of us today is moving forward and working with the City Council of Wall to approve the application submitted by Puffies. And we were told to hold on and hang out really until we submitted that application. And until those disputes, which are now resolved, were settled, we then would decide to proceed and move forward. I believe, and I still believe, that our selection within the location down on Mr. Hanson's property south of the interstate is a mindful location to the community. We didn't want to be, or have, a medical marijuana establishment in the downtown district, so we chose that property to be mindful of the residents of Wall in the event of any voter or anything like that. And looking back at previous emails on my way up here, in the event that we need to work out and continue to plat and zone that property to the correct zoning, we can work out, where we can work that out with Mr. Hanson and get that accomplished in the very near future. And we're willing and able to make that work ASAP. In the event that we can't get that worked out with Mr. Hanson, we have several alternative locations within the correct zone, within the correct zoning on the map, including one of the properties that Mr. Holo recently acquired on the northeast corner of that map. And all we're looking for is to continue to be good neighbors, work with City Council of Wall, and I will stand by for any questions you guys make out.
So where were we on replanting?
My last email, if I may, Mr. Chair, my last email was an email actually from Caroline back to the previous administration and the previous council, talking about the submittal before me. So when an applicant comes to City Council, the application is then reviewed and approved by the City Council. And upon approval, the City Council grants what's called a Form E, which states that the application is then true, correct, and then that Form E is then brought to the state, so then the applicant can go on to receive their state license. We have not received our Form E from the City of Council of Wall. However, we're willing and able to work with Mr. Hanson, plan that property out, and get it going.
How far out are you if things fall in place, do you think?
So with the recent developments with the Supreme Court, that's, oh, just timeline?
Yeah.
We're ready to move as soon as we absolutely can. We're really dependent on the landlord on making those decisions. And so that was why I had stated earlier that in the event that the landlord doesn't want to make a decision within the next sixty days, we're willing and able to move that property and find a different parcel, because Puffy Dispensary, to be frank, with everybody's tire waiting. I do want to get moving on it. I know that we've been patient and trying to be good neighbors. It is the council's discretion and it will always be your guys' decision in that. But from a business perspective, if we have to change our business relationship to be able to continue for what the council deems as satisfactory, we're willing to do that.
Very good.
When was that original application?
The email application, or the email on the application was from January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So we've been patiently sitting on the sidelines for some time, waiting for a decision to come down from court and and then the alternative with Mr. Hanson's rezone application on that parcel, I think it was in April, March or April. And so just trying to, trying to make sure everyone's happy. That's, that's who we are as community members and who will continue to be as community members.
And, and Kit, I know you're very familiar with state law, but we're required by the state of South Dakota to have a medical marijuana dispensary in our community.
Currently, right now.
What? Make it available.
Yep. Yep. Currently, right now, the state of South Dakota requires that one medical cannabis, one medical cannabis establishment is required per jurisdiction. City of Wall being a municipality, is required to allow to have that, as Mr. Anderson said, be available to the public for application. In my opinion, in our organization's views, we have submitted an application and will continue to work with the city government on making it correct and follow all the rules and regulations that come forward.
Very good.
And I'm sorry, you had to wait this long to get stuff going with your location and everything? But I kind of saw this happening just when I was a member of the public, that the city would drug its feet for as long as they could before allowing dispensary and just because that's the way it is. I do have some stuff here that I'm going to hand out to everybody with, with the dispensary. Like, this is when I went around and talked with everyone, when it became legal, I went door to door to everybody in the city and I split up between grass and everything, but just about how our people felt, kind of what we should do with qualities of the other establishments. And the last page on there is the questions and everything.
Do you have any copies of that?
Yeah.
And as city attorney, I just need to clarify, the requested property is not in zone for this. So it's inaccurate to say that the city has drug its feet because the location that the dispensary has proposed is currently not zoned.
But they could have acted faster and found a zone.
But the location is currently not zoned.
They could have acted faster.
The location is currently not zoned.
Dispensary here for patients to allow something that isn't stayed locked in the city.
But had you picked a location?
I didn't pick a location.
And it doesn't matter. Had a location been proposed that was zoned for the application of a dispensary, that's a different matter than a location that's not zoned for it. So I just need to clarify that.
Perfect.
So what's going on then? I'm in kind of late. I just hope I didn't miss nothing.
What is the next step we're looking for?
I think the next step would be a plat on that parcel. So that application, the plat and rezone would be our next steps on that. And then, in the event that Mr. Hanson and the Puffies organization can't come to an agreement in the very near future, we would make a recommendation that we change the address on that property to reflect a current zoned, or correctly zoned parcel, which we have a couple contenders that are disposal.
Very good.
Okay, I do have a question. If the application was done in January of two thousand and twenty-two, since it's over a year old, do we have to? Do they have to resubmit the application or is it still good?
I feel that it's still good because the city wasn't able to follow through with the finalized Form E, so.
So he'll still have to wait to get, or like replotted, correct?
Yes.
But was the original application, did it specify the subject parcel?
It was the entire parcel. It was the entire.
But did it include any of these alternate parcels that you're referencing?
No, it did not. That's why our first and foremost decision would be to work out and deal with Mr. Hanson to replat.
But you mentioned there's other parcels that don't include, does that application include those other alternate? So I would say we would actually need an application that would include those alternate applications.
For sure.
Kit, just, just out of curiosity, where was the Grant Holo location? I'm just curious.
If you, if you take a peek at the, at the map, it's off Citadel, at the very end of that, of that street. Just remember Creighton, sorry. It was off at the back end of Creighton and Grant, this is property right here, this elevator. Yep. So if you look at the corner of Creighton and Fourth, there's a, kind of like a B two bomber looking parcel, for lack of a better definition. Then that purple line goes right through the middle of it. And you guys see which parcel I'm talking about? It's several, it's seven acres, I believe.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, between Creighton and William.
Hill Grace.
Yep.
Is how we know.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so that's a property that Grant just recently closed on. Up on the north end of that, on Creighton Road, on the front edge, there are several trees. And Grant and I went and scoped that property out last week and, or earlier this week, it's a long week. Earlier this week, and we found a really great spot to put, we even reached out to some surveyors that I'm familiar with in Rapid City to possibly come out and look at some of the electrical work, because there are some old campsites out there that we could run. What we did in Meade County for our Meade County location was we had bought a, an industrial trailer that's mainly used in construction sites. We tied that down to, we built concrete posts, tied that down, and are operating a fully compliant dispensary out of Meade County with cameras and all that. So security system, that's, that's pretty cool. You guys ever get a chance for a tour in Rapid City, call me and I'll give you a tour of both cultivation, manufacturing, and retail anytime.
Very good.
Yep.
So in this lot that you're talking about, that'd be the kind of northwest?
Yeah, northwest, correct.
Would that have to get replotted then?
Yes, we would plot that property. Grant's got pretty big plans for it, for it, like only so, pretty exciting for the community.
Very good.
Yep. And if you guys have any more questions, feel free to hang out for a little while and call me back up at any time, so. Yep. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time. Appreciate presenting to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to touch base on what I handed out to you guys there, that's a number of dispensaries that our community thought we should have. And if they thought we should have cultivation facilities as well, manufacturing facilities, and testing facilities. I, I think we need to look at this ordinance again and maybe look at doing some changes, some amendments in it to maybe allow some more business to come into town. We got industrial parks that's empty. There'd be a couple great places there for grow facilities or testing facilities. So I think we need to look at this again here in the future, so.
Very good. Anything else on that? Now is the time for public comment. Each person will have three minutes to address their concerns to the council. Anybody here for public comment? Okay, the next thing we need to address, council, is the permits. The first one is a sign at Cedar Creek Gardens, south of three oh nine Lariat Drive. Should be in our packet.
So the storage units out south of town, it's, there's a piece of property right next to it that is also owned by Hanson's and, so I don't know my views. So she had applied for this building permit quite some time ago, so she had the year to get it done and she was within her year because I think it was August. And so anyway, it's located there, just for clarification of where the three oh nine Lariat.
I knew it'd go on that building, etc.
That's what her proposal is.
We have a picture of the sign.
Yeah, well, it's on the application.
Like this. Oh, okay. And then it's got the. Yeah, it's gonna be fast and it's gonna be on, right on the building.
Gary, have you seen that?
Um, no, but I've talked to her about it.
Bullet.
Yeah.
Get in with our guidelines for signage. Now move to approve. Second. We have a motion and second. Is there any more discussion? If not, all favor, the all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So just, does she need any sort of permit to set that building there?
She had gotten it. Yeah, it was, she was getting close to within the year that we had, because it was August of last year. She applied for it.
Okay, I see what you mean. Gotcha.
Very good. The next item we have is a conditional use permit maxi ant hammer. I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Would you like to address that for the council? It's for Airbnb at five oh two Clem Street.
Yeah, we, we live in, in a basement apartment. We'd like to rent out the first floor for Airbnb.
Very good.
So this did have a Airbnb, Airbnb license for, for a buyer with the owner that she bought the property from. So it was owned by Grant Holo that needed applied for that license, so now she's purchased it, applying for that.
Very good.
So.
We have a motion and a second to approve that conditional use permit. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next, John Luke McGriff, applying for an auto detailing business in a residential area at seven oh three Dorothy Street. John Luke.
Yes. Thank you guys for your time. I'm wanting to do an auto detailing business out of my personal garage while I'm getting my mobile trailer. I have an enclosed trailer that I'm getting set up to do mobile detailing or pickup and drop off. So I've got signatures from the neighbors. I've talked to people. As long as I'm not blocking the alley, everybody is, is cool with it. So just asking you guys for, I guess, permission to do this. I've got my LLC, I've got the, my EIN set up.
Do you have to get signature?
I did. Yep, yep.
Perfect.
Yep, I got it.
So move.
Any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both say you guys are ready to go. Motion carries. When are you gonna be ready to?
Today, tomorrow. Yep. Yeah, I gotta do it. I have something. I'm looking too far. I'll do it. I'm thinking of that.
Next item on the agenda, Rachel Bune, conditional use permit for a fireworks business at one fifteen West Ford. Rachel, are you here to?
Yep.
Talk about that.
Yeah. Um, just want to be able to sell fireworks for that short amount of time, a little over a week or whatnot. I'd be doing it out of my garage and I have a tent and possibly my mom's enclosed trailer, but I know my math, I've got my tax license and everything for it and, yeah, if you have any questions.
So I did do some checking on it as far as if there was special insurance required for this type of business, because I just didn't know and I wanted to be able to share with the council and stuff. While searching that, have you gotten the actual license yet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Because they just commented, if she hasn't already got the license, she probably won't get one now.
No, I already have it, so, yeah, everything's legit through the state and everything, so, just kind of waiting for the cities.
So did somebody have to get inspected at the wall? Or did?
No, not really. I submitted everything they wanted me to and, and I got approved, so.
I can't remember when the, the portables were, did they have to come down for that? I forget.
I mean, the fire marshal can come and look at any of that stuff and he'll line and check down any of that, why not fire?
Yeah, because I think at first there was an issue with it being by the gas stations and all that, but I just wasn't sure.
Because the location was pretty, it has to be that location that I submitted that has to be there, so there, that's the main thing with that, so they've approved it, so.
And the state approved the location. Very good.
And it's, so we just have to do a conditional use permit, just like.
Yes, typically, and not a, you know, I'm just saying. A conditional use permit usually is for three years, you know, whether you want to.
I think through the state, you got to get it every year, so.
And it's just for a window of time?
Yep, it's just for that short amount of time, just for, it's the twenty-seventh, I think, the sixth, so.
Are you gonna be selling them at the end of December?
No, I can't do that. No, that's a different license. Yeah, that's stuff for a different license, so.
Really? Different kind of fireworks?
Well, not different fireworks necessarily, but a different license, gotta pay for it, so.
I see.
But it's very similar, yeah. There's about four different fireworks licenses you can get, so.
Well, I would say she's got her, she needs to wipe through the state, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Very good. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Lily, are you presenting the ambulance financials?
No, actually, I don't know. I guess this was misunderstanding here. Financials, I just sent it for.
He sent them and I just included them, just.
Yeah, I just sent financials for you guys to review. But I'm just gonna do my report as usual. So we had ten calls. In May, two of those calls were canceled. Four of those calls were refusals, so we had only four transports. This is the calls. We, I told you last time, we advertised and put it part-time director and we are going through the interviews right now, so hopefully in July, we're gonna have a pretty clear decision who's gonna be our director. So I guess you have only one meeting in July, as I remember.
Yes.
So I will report for our end of August. And the last thing I would like to mention here, so we decided to do a breakfast bid as a fundraising event during the first week of rally. It's gonna be August fourth from seven AM to ten AM. Right now, we're planning to do it on the lot by the coffee shop. lot by the coffee shop. So yeah, so far it's gonna be pancakes and sausage. Breakfast, it's gonna be free breakfast, but we're trying to raise money for the endowments. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. The next item is the airport morning sign, K better.
So I have two that I received. I have one from Tracy Trask for one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. I have one from Dave Humphrey for one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Fifteen ninety-eight, is that?
Yes.
Naturally, whatever portion of the airport that.
Yep, um, so I had a map ready for him if they, and um I I provided it to both of my people, I mean I know for sure Tracy got one, yeah. I notified Humphries that we were opening it up and um that I got maps for him, so.
Yeah, I was out there checking the scene Springfield Canadian Thistle, we, that's pretty easy to tell, you know, the difference, so. So you need a motion?
I need a motion to approve the height.
I got a good motion, second, put to Dave Humphrey for fifteen ninety-eight.
We have a motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the vacation of the section line near Tanner Hancock's property.
So, um, he had turned this into me on Tuesday and I can't even remember now when it was that we kinda had a committee go out there because the county had reached out to us about this. And it's been long enough ago that I'm not really sure of how that discussion was, so I did reach out to the county again, the gentleman that was down and he did not get me called back, um because I had some questions based on questions that were given to me when I sent this out to the lister, just to get other towns' opinions of how they handle things and stuff. So, I'm not real comfortable proceeding since I didn't get any of my questions answered, I would almost ask if you would maybe consider moving this to the July sixteenth meeting so that we could get more information.
Oh yeah, and I'm, I have a question on this, so if this is vacated, he just gets sixty-six feet of free property, the full width of his lot? I mean, I guess that just doesn't seem right to me, so would it go all the way to the road then? Or, because I, he, he's got the fence there, so is it the stuff? To the west?
Could go all the way to the dam.
But just, I mean, yeah, they're vacating the whole section line, just from that golf course road to the dam, but I mean, just
Yeah.
That's a lot.
So it go to that gravel road at the lot that goes. No, it would just be on the, it would just be on the other side of that Highline Pool that's on the other side of this wooden.
And then straight north.
Yeah, straight north, like if you see the golf course road there, it would just go straight to the north. Into the dam and then it picks up again, you know, the section line picks up again on the other side of the river, that's over on the state shell.
So the section line itself is about sixty.
Sixty-six, main line.
Sixty-six.
I do believe it gets split, so I don't think he would get all in the sixties, yeah, but still.
Who's on the list?
The city.
The city, oh.
Yeah, so that's.
And is that, who put it down as a city, that, that, that's why? Did we have that in?
That's his.
So what had happened is, um, he built his swimming pool in twenty. Um and I don't know if a building permit was applied for with the county, because he's in the county, city limits. And then, um whether they didn't come and check, I don't know those details, I guess I didn't feel comfortable asking those questions way back when, when they were down, so. So now the county wants to try to straighten things out because he's on the property line and they have a setback requirement, like we do. So, they're trying to get this cleared up and so that's their resolution to it, but.
I think we should probably table it.
See, again, might table it. Yeah, no, I agree. Well, it'd be nice to have some sort of a drawing that makes it clear what we're talking about compared to where his trees are.
And Tanner could be at that meeting, it could be great.
Said that helped too.
If he's one, one of the ones that have it done, he should probably field with all of that, his drawing. Or maybe the county's.
Everybody agrees with that? Very good. Uh, the.
Well, just to consent this to the July sixteenth meeting.
Okay, the, the next item is resolution twenty dash oh for the garbage rate increase.
So we, um have new garbage contractors and so we met with them Monday, I believe, the committee did. And so, what their proposal is of the rates that we have with the city, this resolution the rates that they're gonna charge the city, this resolution is the property increase. We would be that's gonna move the arbitrary by dollars per resident from the twenty-one seventy-five.
So, tw- twenty-five dollars for, what was the old rate?
Twenty-one seventy-five.
One interesting point. The old rate, incorrect man, Ron Carolyn, we had for ten years with no increase.
Yeah.
Which is a great deal, well, I'm.
Well, they also showed interest in uh giving a scholarship for high school kids and they also, they also donate the porta potties for uh, celebration.
Yes.
And.
Yep, Main Street.
Main Street, you know, Main Street Molar.
And there is an increase to the transfer station lease. So.
This all is effective July one, right?
July one, yeah, it sounded like in the meeting that they would probably be starting next week coming down and dropping the new totes off to residents and then, um they would. I haven't gotten out, back to Kiefer's on it to see by contractor and they should pick up our garbage next week on Thursday and then that's almost, yeah, that'd be their last pickup and then at some point they'll need to come and take their toys away.
And Kiefer, my understanding, they didn't put a bid in for the residential garbage.
That's correct, Sanders was the only contractor, vendor submitted bid for the contract, that's what I need to say.
Does, does Kiefer own that building down there?
No.
Yeah, well, the.
He, he, they lease it from someone else.
Oh, they lease it from a developer guy at a school.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure, I didn't think it was the city's, but I didn't know.
Yeah. And I guess we don't know what their arrangement is even, but.
Yeah.
So do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
I would think that.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. The next item we have on the agenda is concern forms.
And obviously, these are not to have names released on them, but um I will, upon your approval, send letters to know, to the people to let them know that we did receive a concern on it, but this starts like a tracking um scheduled, because by ordinance, if you get the second complaint within a certain timeframe it'll all lead up to getting rid of the animals, but, so that's why we have to start with this and they'll get a letter, but.
And there's two, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it explains that on their uh on that form, what the next step is if it isn't resolved.
In the letter, yeah, right, provide that, all that information to them.
Yeah, on that first one, I've seen, I've seen twice all, three of the dogs running yeah, around town.
That's dangerous.
Way over, they were over by the school. Heard them back over here. Yeah, perfect, I saw them, they're down by a red house. Really? Yeah, that was probably the same day that I stopped.
So we are, are tracking that and we'll.
Yeah, just so you know, I just wanna keep you guys informed that letters will be sent, but this is kinda like a tracking process so that you know, after the I can't say for sure, I'd have to look at the ordinance, but I wanna say after the fourth concern submitted then the animals are moved.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, uh, the next item, Carolyn's uh, finance officer's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know let you know, I always appreciate you guys letting me attend my trainings that I go to and I went last week to Spearfish, it was great weather, unlike this week, but um always good information that I receive up there, um, good networking and and finding that the new ones are slowly getting weeded out, they ask how many people have been there, five or less, and we get a whole bunch of people that stand up and then as they keep going in the years, they just there's only a few of us. Really important that we attend, so. And then I didn't have it unlisted under there, but I just uh, wanted to, to share other information, so based on the pay request that we had at Paulstein on this um, bill list I did need to take a draw on the construction that we have at the bank. I have not been able to receive the six hundred thousand grant that we got from the state yet, I submitted the paperwork, but there's some additional information and split out on the pay request of information that they require, so I have the engineers helping me with that. And then received a letter in the mail today that West River Lyman Jones, like everybody, will be giving us a water rate increase, so we are currently at and that's above our, what they give us for the hour, many gallons, I'd have to look at that, but anyway, it's going from a dollar thirty-five up to a dollar fifty-five additional thousand gallons above our amount that they give us for the contract note.
And when did they say that would go in here?
That letter, let's see. Actually, January twenty twenty-five is when that happened. And that is basically all I have to.
Thank you, Carolyn, uh, next item is public works report, Garrett.
Well, it's been a rough couple weeks, water main breakup by the meat plant. Uh, but we, we got it done in one day, to get everybody's water back onto them and I think we were there till like nine thirty, but had to get a little help from Todd because his excavator's a little bit bigger than the mini, but it went good, we got it back up and running and everybody was, was good about it, appreciate the patience. Um, and then we did get the speed limit signs changed out on Larriett, mine included pitcher, or Carolyn did, sorry.
You gave them to me, just here.
A little orange flag underneath so they can see on, on both ends and then today we put up a couple more orange flags on uh, Glen Street, we'd already got orange flags on everyone going south and so now we, I had to just purchase some more, I didn't have enough, so so I included pictures of those two. Those do help, Garrett.
Did they?
Yep. I noticed, right? Yeah, so we like, do we put it up in here, or do we put it more at a high level, you know, as you're driving, so, you know, it's the ones going north are different than the ones going south, for the south ones, they're up higher, but they're bad with dry, so. Um, pool's up and running, but it's been closed the last three days of the weather, but uh, everything startup went smooth this year, so any real issues? Um, then pretty much just mowing and spraying weeds and hopefully the mosquitoes don't get out of control. Oh yeah, the day we were cleaning up the dirt from the uh, water leak, I went and turned on the sprinkler system at the park and the valve blew off and shot water through the ceiling, so. Yeah, there, that place has quite a history, I forgot that it started on fire one time. Took all the sheet rock coming, but yeah, staying busy, I'm gonna do like we went and cleaned out the drainage on the corner of Stone Drive, goes going west towards uh Old Town. So I don't know if you guys drive out that way, look, we put, took quite a bit of dirt out to this, it's, it's not gonna it'll flow when there's a heavy rain, but it's a wider area, so it evaporate faster, you know, it doesn't flow away, so we did the same down on the dump road, cleaned out those covers, that water runs good too. Been busy.
Very good.
Alright, with the stop sign that flashes all the way around, you may be on that. I just talked to Trevor today and totally forgot about it, but we're gonna take the lift over tomorrow. Um I'm thinking the, I'm thinking the panel's bad, but we can recharge our app or recharge your for the battery and that usually lasts about three weeks, so I'll get that charged up, so that works, so I can get another solar panel working.
Perfect.
Yeah, sorry.
No.
You've been busy.
Very good, Garrett, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh the next we have the mayor's report and it's noted the West River Water Meeting. Danny, can you speak about that?
Yeah, sure, um, I was the the straw that got drawn for that particular meeting, um, so Mary asked me if I would just give a couple takeaways from it, um, it was their last of, I think they said four of those meetings, informational meetings they had had around uh, the hills and the, and western South Dakota, um, and there was not very many people that came, it was me and Jake Fitzgerald from West River Lyman Jones and one of his board members, um, and then one couple came in too, but it was more like a come and go that I talked to you about what they're doing, it wasn't like a structured sit-down deal, but um, so basically, it's the Western Dakota Regional Water System and for simplicity's sake, what they're doing is creating a water pipeline from the Missouri River to western South Dakota that is similar to the one that goes to somewhere east river, I don't remember exactly where that was, but there is already one that goes, it's like Yankton sounds familiar to me, but that doesn't make sense because they're on, on the Missouri River, but, um no, it's not, no, I can't remember, Madison maybe, maybe it's Madison. Anyway, there's already a big project that's kind of exactly like this that goes east, so they're uh, basically has uh school minds do a study that in extreme drought and if our population continues to increase in western South Dakota like it is uh, we will be at a shortage of water more quickly than they had initially, or more, more quickly than most people probably think or they initially thought. Um, if population growth and drought, it would be like twenty, well, it would be twenty uh, twenty eighty, maybe? Uh, so that's not really.
With twenty eighty.
Yeah. Yeah, twenty eighty.
The year twenty.
The year twenty eighty.
Oh.
So, um, no, I mean, and they said that like, we're never gonna probably, we don't have to worry about it, but. You know, other generations do, so have to be concerned about it now, so they're not trying to play catch up. Um, they are, West River Lyman Jones is a member of this group. Um, and so basically they're, they have a board of directors, they have members, they, you can buy into it. If you're a, if you're somebody who gets bulk water, you can be a voting member. So like West River Lyman Jones is a bulk water provider, they have a board seat, um, and they are on, like on the part of this planning. For this project. So they are just in like feasibility studies and that kind of stuff right now, but they wanted people to kind of, to know that it was possibly coming and some of those, uh, first initial thoughts about it. Uh, and something I did not know was that Edgemont's water comes out of the ground at like a hundred and sixty degrees.
Ours is, ours is a hundred.
They said that there's like, nobody there can just run water out of a cold cow. Cause it's so hot. Um, and there's, and that, you know, for humans, that is a big deal, but it's probably a bigger deal for livestock. Cause it comes out of those, those underground water, comes from underground water and it's already hot when they're trying to drink it. So they were talking about like guys down there who run fifteen hundred miles of pipe to pipe from Nebraska up to Edgemont or that, that area down there, just so they can get water that they can use, so. Um, this is, I mean, and it's all Western South Dakota. We would be one of the furthest east communities that would probably be benefited by this. Bill. Um.
Do they have a projected time that, when they would start or not really?
No, not really. They are pretty well in, uh. Planning phases at this point. Um, however, they are, let's see, I can look at their twenty twenty-four. Um, they've got some grants, they are trying to get some congressional authorization for feasibility studies. Uh, they are doing the, evaluating the water needs of the communities and the areas of Black Hills. Um, and then they're designing the pipeline and it's track right now, so.
Yeah, they mentioned too, but one meeting that I went to was like, we need to get on there before people below us.
People below us, yeah.
Like on the.
Yeah.
On the Missouri, because then that's just gonna take away the number of people that can use it, you know?
Yeah, and like the city wall can't, like they would not serve us because they are not a, they don't deliver to individual people or cities. Unless you are a bulk water provider, like the city of Rapid City, the city of Boxell, they're bulk, what they consider bulk. Uh, but West River would be the, life jumps would be the, the only way we would get it, like they have to get it so we can get it.
Very good. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it. We have any other items for discussion where no action can be taken?
With the cannabis license being talked about in, uh, next meeting, going to be put on the agenda to talk about our current ordinance on it, so.
Very good. Anything else? Uh, our next city council meeting and only city council meeting in July. Is on July sixteenth, Tuesday at six thirty PM.
I also forgot fireworks are July third. Um, location to determine, determine, we don't know. There's a huge green field to the south of there, we don't know. You know, if it's gonna be still kind of green and so.
Cool weather, probably will.
Probably, so. Yeah, they get, get delivered tomorrow, so. Here we talked and just self, of course, but. Yeah. Yeah, where we normally do, if you just, if it's really dry, we don't like doing it. So I've had a few people ask.
Did you say that south of them?
Yes.
So July third, yeah.
I think it's Monday?
No.
No, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Very good. We, we do have a need to go into executive session. Uh, and if I could have a motion to do that, appreciate it.
I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose same signs, going into executive session.
I would make a motion to accept Danny Herring's resignation as economic development director with regret, huge regret.
Second.
Do, do you need a separate motion for the advertising or can he, you know?
And, and to approve advertising for this position. Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose same sign, motion carries. With that, I will declare the meeting adjourned.